The draft county commissioning commission to order. And the first item is to check the role and I will note for the record that all commissioners are present in the county court. Please come on to that and please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Pretty light this evening. I will note that it looks like time will allow, I would like to resume our discussion about the sign ordinance picking up what we left off at our work session on Monday. But with that notation, I would like to take the motion to approve the agenda.
I move.
I second you.
Hi.
To NAMIS. The next item is to approve three sets of minutes. I reviewed them. The only comment I had, and I didn't know which one it was in, I believe actually the word excuse was used for the, it should have been recused for the purpose of the harmonie manner application. We'll just find that and make that change. Any other comments on the?
On the October minutes? We were talking earlier, we may have to go back to the video to get, we're hoping Mr. McAuliffe was here so he could maybe explain a little bit better what he had said during the meeting. But I don't think that that quite captures his sentiment in his public comment section. I would like to go back to the video and maybe expand that a little bit.
So which one is that, the October 19th?
The October 19th.
So are you suggesting then that we table that until we have the opportunity to do that? Okay. Let me, also, I noticed that it was in the September 21st minutes. And on page, bottom of page one, it's just this excuse himself, which I guess is technically true, but I think more appropriate to say he recused himself of the discussion. Any other comments on the minutes?
I think there's no other changes. I would move that we approve the first two sets of minutes and table the third set of minutes for October 19th.
Second, Beth.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? That's NAMIS. The next item on the agenda is the public hearing on special use permit number 22083, the Mussonland Cairns accessory dwelling unit. Miss Summers, would you like to tee this up?
Thank you. The applicants have requested a special use permit for an accessory dwelling unit on their property located at 1265 Epti Valley Road pursuant to 17036A and 17062G. The property is 25 acres in size and is zoning conservation and agricultural. It is proposed to add an addition of a kitchen onto the current guest house, which would then qualify as an accessory dwelling unit. The structure is located 25 feet away from the principal dwelling. The existing guest house is 840 square feet and with a 12 by 16 kitchen addition, it would bring it to over, just barely over 1,000 square feet at 1,032 square feet. VDOT did not have any objections to this. The Health Department commented the septic system serving the main house cottage and barn was originally installed without a permit. The system was evaluated and now not by a private sector who determined the system was adequate for a three bedroom home in 2016. An operations permit, which specified that there were two bedrooms in the main house, one bedroom in the cottage, none in the barn. The location of the proposed kitchen addition does not appear to encourage or any of the part setbacks from the septic tank and/or drain hole area. And the applicants are present.
Applicants are present. Okay. With that, I will open the public hearing and maybe I'll ask if the applicants have anything to add or modify with respect to the application. Anyone would like to speak? Just a couple of these coming on down. David Aiman, he's just getting dressed.
In Pima District, 1203 Epti Valley Road. Well, the county has now said I've got to use, now we've got to use 28 Longtree Lane. I always put the sign up today for seeing if you drive down, do you think you want to see it?
Oh, my goodness.
So, my wife and I own property that joins the applicants. I think we have a boundary of quarter and a half mile and we have no objection to this. I've been to the cabin one time, you know, months ago and I've read the standards. There's one thing I would point out that you're probably aware of, this will have no loading effect on a road used by anybody else. You get a lot of complaints, are used to, about, oh, there's going to be more traffic and more, but, you know, you leave 231, you drive right down to their property and nobody else will be affected by this in terms of vehicle trips. So, I don't mind what the wife wants to speak or not, but I'm happy for both of us and we ought to, you go ahead and grant a recommendation of approval. Thank you.
Thanks, Peter.
Would anyone else like to speak? All right, we will hereby close the public hearing and turn to commissioners. I guess maybe we'll start with you, Mr. Sisk, because I presume this is in your district? Or am I got that wrong?
It is, but I can elect to, to, to go last.
Well, at least, we'll start out on the end. Mr. Shulman, do you have any questions or?
I hammered him out with Michelle earlier. I've got no concerns with this.
Is there anything?
You know, I went by there and it looked like a really good accessory dwelling unit to me and it's primarily for a member of the family or members of the family, so I think I'll settle on that.
Thank you. Mr. Sisk, you want to keep waiting or you want to?
No, I've talked briefly with Ms. Smith and it appears, I mean, it's my package for the work, I, you know, kind of explained everything, any questions I had she enlightened me, but I don't have any.
Well, and this is the first time that I've used the new standards for the accessory dwelling unit, but it is what I remember for, you know, the family addition is what we used, or that was exactly the, the family unit that we used to approve. And, you know, in terms of being less than 1,200 square feet, having a separate entrance, having a separate driveway, being within 200 square feet of the house, those were all those boxes that we used to check and all those boxes checked in this instance, so, you know, I feel like this is a very big application.
Nothing to add, I think the application is fully submitted, it's submitted and it looks like it's a good fit.
Mr. Hitt, do you agree?
I think it's very appropriate and it's in line with everything and the ordinance. Having said that, I support it, but from this point on, I'm not going to vote on any more S U P permits that go to the B Z A because the B Z A doesn't really have the consideration of what we do in our meetings and lots of times they come out with the exact opposite results of us, so I think it's good for the planning commission to make, as a fact finding, but it's embarrassing when we have opposite decisions, so support your application, but I'm not, don't vote.
Thank you. I guess I would just ask, there's no, then breakfast or Airbnb associated with this and if the Airbnb, you would have to come in for something like that, there's nothing? Okay, that's my additional question I had. Well, with that, I entertain the motion to forward this application in some manner.
I so moved.
You so moved that we forward it to the B Z A with a recommendation of approval?
Yeah.
All right, any further discussion?
Two seconds.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? I'm staying. You got that? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Matt, for helping out. If you have any questions, please reach out. See you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
See you.
Nice to see you.
The next item on the agenda is a general public comment period. Again, saying request to come forward to the microcrown statement and your adversary district. Looks like we have one.
That's all, just me, John Capioli, hand for district. I'm here to talk about the new standards that are going to be possibly adopted for driveway, roadways and things like that as posted on the board docs. It appears to be that somebody is entertaining the idea of actually making private driveway entrance for events even more strict than easily 30 to 40% of the roads that are maintained by the county and by the VDOT. Because those roads, we all drive, we all get stuck in a position where you can't get by because there's another car coming the other way and there's a ditch down in there, so you gotta back up somebody else's driveway or let somebody go by. And those are public roads. This proposal appears to be leaning towards private roads and the private roads are probably more higher standard than the county roads. It seems a little obscene.
Okay, that's it. Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Benefit of the discussion, I know we've rappled with that, the language for this emergency events language and I believe we have been working to try to refine the language and try to strike some kind of balance and I don't know that we've gotten it yet, so that is an item that is still before us, but thank you for your comments.
I think though, you're referring to type one and type two, is that?
No.
That's, that's part of it, yes.
But it's the reference to the, uh, which is it?
Informational number two.
Vehicle access to events direction from board supervisors, item two. That's the, that's the one where the draft language said that you have to have the ability for emergency vehicle to get by in both directions. It's, it's not related to the type one, type two discussion we've been having about the then breakfast, but we can come back to that. Any other public comments?
Just one.
Feel free to consider yourself.
And makes it difficult to respond to public comment about what you're, you were just discussing, if you're not going to discuss it until later, I would have to be able to see in front of me, in which case I can buy lottery tickets, as to what you're, we can't, we the public, general, not just myself, can't be part of the discussion in the way that the public comment is dealt with at the moment. Maybe in your rules, your discussions or whatever, maybe somebody might want to look at changing that just a little bit.
Well, I appreciate that. The reason I made my comments was to try to.
Oh, no, no, I understand, I understand. It's, it's difficult because after this public comment was down, then there's a discussion, whichever it may be.
Right.
And then somebody can't comment on it until the very next meeting, which is a month later.
Yeah, for the work sessions, we have been actually doing a public comment at the beginning and at the end.
At the end, that would be great. I think it was two meetings ago, I had the same thing in one of the meetings, they told me, no, they wanted, I think it was Ms. Smith actually, they wanted to have an extra comment period and it was shot down because it wasn't part of the Robert's rules or something.
I think it was, I think that was for a special call meeting, special call meetings operate by different rules.
And I thought this was supposed to be a special meeting called also?
No, this is the regular monthly meeting of the planning commission, so those rules don't apply and those are board supervisors' rules regarding public comment and sometimes don't apply to other bodies. And I could be, I could be misremembering because I attend so many meetings and come to my head, but I believe that I'm correct on that instance and I don't know that the speaker identified himself, so I just, I just wanted to get a record that John Capioli handed my straight. And in the worst instance, if someone wishes to be identified, they can always raise their hand and someone up here will normally see a hand.
Yes.
And can request that the chairman recognize the person who wishes to speak.
Yes, my view is as long as we're, you know, it's not, things aren't getting out of control and everyone can have reasonably equal voice on any issue with that. And I think it should be generally prerogative under most conditions. I will note, I did pull up from the board docs, this language, this is the language that says in all zoning districts, for access to any traffic event impacting safe access, private streets, roads, driveways or lanes, you shall be maintained in such a way that vehicles may pass each other on the all-weather surface. So this was the language that was proposed and you're still finding on board docs, I believe that the commission has discussed this language three or four times and always found it lacking in certain ways with plenty of potential unintended consequences. The challenge is we haven't yet come up with a more suitable alternative, so just to get contextualized.
I don't think the board loved it either if it makes you feel any better.
It's not an easy, it's not an easy fit. Anyway, I guess I will officially close the public comment period, thank you very much. We have no other new business before us, so as I previously noted, I would appreciate your indulgence to return to the matter of the sign ordinance language where we left off on Monday evening. As I recall.
Gary, I have a couple of questions that came up because I've been in discussion with Matthew Black and whether or not, you know, all the signs that go up for the art tour as well as other tours would be covered and in trying to figure out the answer to that, I, I myself got confused about the interplay between sections. 170-94, permit exempt signs and section 1, so 17102D. So, 102D. It's not, are these signs exempt signs or are they signs that require a permit? Because if there's signs that require a permit, then what that section does is basically negate a number of provisions in section 19-94. I just don't see them as compatible.
So I believe, and maybe Miss Summers, Mr. Curry could direct this, but I believe the intent of 17102 is to reconsider an aggregate, a number of signs. And if in aggregate there is, there is a total shortage that, that in aggregate, that exceeds this aggregate number, that those signs would require a permit, whereas earlier, on an individual sign-by-sign basis, those signs would be exempt. That is, that I believe was the structural intent of the, I don't know, Mr. Curry, would you like to?
Yeah, I guess you're speaking of 94O.
Yes.
States temporary signs not exceeding four square feet erected on any model parcel provided that people are, don't need a permit. So the idea is these little press-in signs that pop up for political or other reasons that don't need a permit, that'd be unyielding to try to track down permits for all those. However, they still need to be the requirements of 102, like the date of first placement needs to be on the back of that sign. From an enforcement standpoint, then zoning administrator could identify how long the sign's been in place, or if it doesn't have a date, then it can be against. Nine times out of 10, these are in the right way, can't be there anyway, so they're illegal from the start. So that's just, you don't need a permit, apply for a permit for a small temporary sign. For other temporary signs, you do need a permit and it has to fit in the box in 102.
Okay.
And if there is a, there could be a construction error or conflict between the two.
Actually, now I'm using, it seems almost that the use of the term permitted.
Yeah.
In 102 may be not as in get a permit, but allowed.
Yeah. Yeah, well, honestly, you know, an average person reading this, if I wanted to know whether I, I could put up all those signs for the art tour on various places, I don't know if I'd know whether or not I needed a permit.
So you need a permit for every sign unless it's exempted.
Right.
So that fundamental maybe is not clear enough somewhere that if you want a sign, you must get a permit unless we give you the get out of jail free card in section 94.
Okay, well, we're talking about here 120 signs that go up for the art tour.
Are they on the same parcel?
They're on different parcels, but some of them are.
That helps.
Yes, so the fabric signs that are a little bit bigger, as this was written originally, they could be 50 square feet and that would be acceptable, but they have to get a permit and they can only have them up for 100 days.
But for an art show for a weekend, she's addressing, they can put up 104 two-by-two signs.
Yep. And they don't come in as.
The only thing they need to do is put the date on the back.
So I think the issue, if I follow that email traffic, was that perhaps these signs are larger than the four square feet.
Well, they're not, they're, I don't think, they're two foot by one and a half.
If they're larger, then if they're larger, then they reduce the size.
This says two square feet.
Four square feet, two by two.
Two by two.
So.
So those, that's what I saw, but then it didn't seem clear to Matthew or to Andrea that they could fit into this.
It seems like if they just, if they look at that O, I mean, it's one sentence that says.
So they, they could also, they couldn't put more than five of those small signs on one parcel.
Right.
Okay? Even if they are permitted, they still can't have more than five of them, is what 102 says, but chances are they don't want more than five of the little signs on.
No, they don't.
They could put one bigger sign on a parcel that's no more than 50 square feet and they could scatter a whole bunch of little signs under four square feet all over the place and never ask Michelle in fairness.
Yeah, to me, part of what hampered my ability to try to add clarity to this perhaps was the use of the words permitted in the first line of A. Maybe we could change that to allowed, because it's.
That, that clears it up.
It sounds like you have to get a permit.
You know, that's what it says, permit exempt signs.
No, no, in 102, it says a maximum of five signs are permitted for a lot, so I'm saying if we change that to allowed, it sounds like you need to get a permit and it doesn't mean that, it just means it's permitted in a small feet. So I think allowed, we could figure out some of the end, yeah, certain. Because we just said, I think the point is the earlier section says, these are things that don't require a permit and then the very next line said maximum number of temporary signs are permitted. So it's just the use of the language, I think, is part of the problem, so.
And also the fact that it's outside of the good section that says permit exempt signs. So then you, okay, so then you switch over to 102 and you, are you still in the permit exempt sign?
It seems funny to refer to a permit exempt sign as being permitted, so I think allowed would help. I don't know that it will clear it up entirely, but I think that's part of the source of the confusion.
So we're going to change permitted to allowed?
Yes, that's the purpose of what they were trying to. I believe, let's see, we were looking at the different zones and we, I think we stopped at the point where we edited the last sentence under 170-106 to end without a permit, so that brings us to. Commercial and industrial. So, commercial village. So is there, could, do you? Miss Summers, is there a, is there an example of, that you can think of for this first situation?
Under which?
The commercial village zone with only one tenant, I'm just, it's not, it's not critical, but if there is a, an example that was in, we had in mind.
Most everywhere in Spiritville on Main Street. A couple places in Woodville.
If I could just ask, which attachment are we tracking these with on board docs? What name am I looking for?
It's the, if you go under the special meeting.
Okay, after the special meeting, gotcha.
And go to the one at the very bottom.
Okay.
It's a simple tract.
Cool, thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
And we're talking about 170-107.
Right.
Commercial industrial. So what we're saying here is this is a bit more relaxed than the standards previously for the resource conservation and residential signs, so you're getting a little bit more signage allowed in this.
You can see that this is exactly what it says today. There's no changes at all proposed to A1.
Oh, okay.
Right, and because there's no email.
Thank you for that clarity. So this is no change to the status quo. And then, I'm just going to keep going until somebody interjects or stops me. Areas on a commercial general, properties only one tenant. For the first, so.
So it's 75 square feet. You have one signage?
I guess I'm having trouble parsing the distinction between one and two.
You get bigger signage if you have a big building in commercial general and the size of your sign is based on the size of your building. So if you have a big, long frontage, you get a big sign.
Ah, okay.
If you have a small building, then it's going to be smaller.
Thank you.
And that's really not a change.
And the lot, and the point about dropping the except where only one sign identifying the establishment exists, just an unhelpful appendage, is that?
I don't know what they were trying to get at before, quite frankly.
It seems like another one that was, had a particular property in mind. Guess we'll hear from them if it exists.
So they're, they're not conforming. They'd be invested.
And then item three, this is no change as well, again, commercial highway and you get a little bit more. And then proposing to drop the properties with a special provision for something.
Our thought was that if there's a deep, if the owner of the building is going to divvy up the signage between his tenants or tenants, that's a, that's a matter for them to work out in their lease agreement, we don't need to be involved.
So they're going to have to parse out their, their total allotted signage.
You get X square feet, you figure out who gets what.
Yeah.
That seems like the sense of.
That's come up a few times.
I'd say, say, this is very familiar.
So do we eliminate the one tenant from one and three then? Why single that out, make sure you look for the, okay, what about those two?
Well, that's a good point. Why doesn't it just start with on the property?
The total maximal level.
The total maximum allowable sign area is.
That's true, because it wouldn't apply to the multiple tenants as currently written.
Yeah, I think that could be streamlined. I think the very size based on distance away from the road is still valuable.
Yeah.
If you're far off the road, a bigger sign might be needed to attract attention.
So, but I think the point is simply we can scratch the on properties housing only one tenant from each one of those.
Because they're going to have to divide it up if they're more than one tenant.
And what we're saying is, we don't care how many tenants there are. If you're in the Commercial Village, the total maximum allowable sign area shall not exceed two feet for each foot of building. And we need to clarify that this is only given parcel, but seems to be implied.
It says on properties.
Well, I was proposing to scratch that, but, because it seems to me it'd be weird to say on properties, the total maximum, because what alternative would there be to being on property?
Yeah, and I think it doesn't really, if the, if for some reason, building straddled a parcel line, it's still going to be based on the frontage.
It's going to be based on the frontage, so I think it's, I think it's clear as the most streamlined to just scratch on properties housing only one tenant, and just pay up from there. Any objection to that?
That makes more sense. And take that out of number two as well.
Yeah, number two and number three.
And number one.
And number one, one, two, three, drops. We discussed four, just a whole group there. Now, okay, permitted signs, are we back now to permitted as in permitted? Or are we back to?
This means allowed, but this, that's where, this is strung through the dock, the Arizona zoning orders, but frankly, permitted uses, you know, in your use table, it's a P, right? It's permitted by right, P. It's not an A, allowed.
I understand, I guess it is really only problematic where it was in a sentence in a section labeled permit exempt. Maybe it's less troubling here, but these, but these signs would require a permit.
All signs require a permit, except for those special signs in 94.
Yes.
Not all of the temporary signs.
Right, they're listed out in 94.
And they're allowed, not permitted. Okay, so I think actually, even if we don't do it consistently, I think in that one place, it does help to change that word. So when located on the same lot or parcel as the use to which the sign is directed attention unless otherwise specifically identified. This is a little harder to follow.
So this was added to draw the distinction between the addition of off-premise signs, right? So you have a whole separate section now identified off-premise signs. So we're not talking about those right here, we're talking about on-premise signs.
So maybe we should say, so we define, we define on-premise signs, or do we only define off-premise signs?
If only off-premise signs is defined.
Well, what we're essentially doing here is defining on-premise signs.
Yeah.
So I'm wondering if we should go ahead and just define off-premise signs, as signs that are located on the same lot or parcel as the use to which the sign is directed attention. Well, let's keep going and see what this, this is about, but again, I'm feeling there's a little bit of. Okay, so temporary signs in this case, unless they meet the requirements of permit exempt signs, do need a permit. So in this case, all of these are permit. You do have to come in and get a permit.
This means allowed, okay. Every time it says permitted, it means allowed. Only a very small subset of those that are allowed don't need to get a permit. Everything automatically needs a permit.
Okay, so again, in this case, that's fine, because it is. So temporary signs. So these same types of signs we've already, are these, are these all identi, are these all defined? These still defined, these seven types of signs? Check that, I think, I think we talked a lot about those definitions in my. Wall. Window.
It looks like they're all aligned.
Okay.
I think theater signs is one that Berkeley group made a mention about.
Yeah, yeah, why use that word?
And they, I think they suggested changing it to something more generic, like kind of changeable message or something like that.
Changeable sign.
Well, yeah, because theater sign does not appear to be defined in either anymore. So somehow it got out of the defined signs. So is it replaced by any of these others, or? Seems to me that if we're going to change the name, whatever it is we're going to substitute, should be added to the definition system. Unless there's already a type of sign defined here that would suffice. And you're saying this is not an animated sign, it's just a sign that you can change the lettering on?
Yeah, changeable sign, I think, is sort of confusing. Fair suggestion.
You know, I kind of view most of these in this list as examples in, unless they're prohibited, like a roof sign or something like that, you don't really care.
Yeah, I'm not.
As long as it isn't too big.
Yeah, right, exactly.
And it's not excluded by the way it's placed on the property, what you call it is not so important. But these are all things that were in the ordinance for. Now, window signs aren't called out later, and talking about maybe not those don't add to your overall square footage.
I guess what I'm tempted to observe is that why do we need anything about changeable or theater signs? Because aren't they either going to be on a wall or roof or on these other types of building mounted?
Yeah.
Because there's nothing about those that requires that they might have changeable letters on them, so it seems to me that we're working on a distinction without a difference.
And I think only if you needed to talk about them in some of, in the general regulations, you want to apply some special regulation to that type of sign, or special lighting to that type of sign, or anything else, but I don't think.
I don't think there's any such thing.
Yeah, we're only talking on the theater.
Is there, can anyone, I guess, does anyone have electronically they can search for the word theater? Yeah, I think it just goes away. Let's just propose to take it out, and if we come across the word theater somewhere else, we'll have to put it back in, but rather than start getting into changeable or not changeable, because it seems to me all those other types could be changeable or not changeable. So let's get rid of that. Any objections to that?
Take it out.
Take it out.
All right, and there we go. Pole signs is special, and most even a lot of parcel of a petroleum motor fuel reseller. Okay, so.
So this is some gymnastics to try to come close to content without doing, right? So you can't say, gas station signs can only have this, that, or the other thing on their, on their sign, because we can't tell them what they're allowed to put on their sign. But you can say signs that are located at a gas station can be a certain size, and that's where this is trying to go.
I guess I'm, it's not immediately obvious to me, oh, okay, so pole signs are not included. But this isn't the only type of pole sign, this is just one particular set of pole signs. So it seems to me we would need to deal with other potential pole signs that are not on petroleum motor fuel resellers if we're going down that path.
What were you to allow? It can only happen if it happens to be colocated with.
Do we have pole sign in this?
Fuel reseller.
I thought in that case would be like a special exception.
With freestanding sign.
That we can request, that they can request a waiver.
Well, you can get a special exception for any size issues, I think that's other section here, I don't know if you covered it yet, that there is some language that basically says, it's the last section we'll get to. Somewhere in here it says, if you don't like these rules, you can go.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I'm trying to think, pole sign would go on that category, because you probably don't want to hold on to it.
I think the default is to go on.
Are there not other, I'm just trying to think, are there other obvious examples of pole signs?
What about empty alley stores?
Well, that was gasoline things.
I'm trying to think what the signage at the bank.
That's, and what is, I don't know, what lies between a freestanding sign.
Yeah, now that I think, I couldn't, I couldn't remember if they had anything applied or not, but I think it's. It's on the, I think it is law.
So we have these other types of signs back in our definitions, freestanding sign, marquee sign, it's just now occurred to me that isn't this one? Oh, no, I see, they're, they're, those are coming up, okay, so they're all addressed in a different way. But freestanding sign. Since a pole sign is any sign that is mounted on one or more freestanding poles, it's hard for me to understand how a pole sign isn't a freestanding sign.
I think it's a subset of a freestanding sign, but I think it's fine.
Okay.
And so freestanding sign does include a polar python sign.
Excellent, I'll accept that.
Oh, yeah, in fact, the freestanding sign, yeah, explicitly, yeah.
So they're singling out pole signs from other freestanding signs in order to make them more restrictive than the freestanding signs?
No, you're singling out pole signs that happen to be at the location of a gas station.
That's the only.
To make it more restrictive?
No. And that's, that's a gas station that happens to be in a commercial zone, right? Or industrial zone.
Right.
This was full of content-based language before, and so this was the best way to retain more or less what was there. I'm trying to take the content out.
I understand, but it seems like it's on the verge of being too tortured to be comprehensible.
I agree.
That's why I'm trying to parse out the different types and whether we do need.
Freestanding sign.
So the pole, this one is, is really about trying to allow for all these other signs that are also on the gas stations.
You get a 20-foot-tall pole sign, and you get building sign, temporary, placards, whatever, and a freestanding sign not to exceed 10 square feet.
Okay, so that's kind of a carve-out for gas stations, because we know what kind of signs we have.
Now, they could put, they could advertise for anything they want on their signage, but likely they would want to advertise for their product.
I guess, I guess my point here, if this is about, if this is about regulating a certain, a sign associated with a certain use, why don't we just make it about the use, just like they're making it about the zone, rather than make it about a pole sign on that property?
Do you want to make, are you proposing then to incorporate the language of section eight into section nine, and eliminating discussion of the use by possibly proposing an equation of the height of the pole to affect the square footage, to reduce the square footage to 10 feet?
I might be, but you're four steps ahead of me.
So how would we thread the needle to get that language into freestanding signs?
Well, I think there's a thought that a gas station might need more signage.
Yeah.
And so that's what's attempted to do in A, so you can now withstand the other sections. You get your pole sign, plus you get these A, B, and C. Whereas freestanding sign is just a, it's subset of this, right? But you put the limit of 10 square feet on that freestanding sign, and you also have your pole sign.
So what we could say, if, if you are using a pole sign for part of your freestanding sign square footage, your pole sign cannot exceed 10 square feet of area and 20 feet.
Yeah, sure. You, you might just, you might not want anybody else to be able to get a pole sign ever again, quite frankly. I don't know.
I don't argue with that, I'm just trying to figure out a way to do it, Gary wants to do it.
Go next to a gas station, sure.
So is it the pole sign that makes it a problem? It's the height that makes it an issue?
It's the height, isn't it?
I mean, what I'm trying to get at is, what if they put it on two poles instead of one? Doesn't that, if they could just take it out of this? It just seems like it's so fragile by all of the things that make it subject, it just seems like it would be easy to dodge by making a slight change, if the point is, we want to kind of treat the sign and the gas station somehow collectively.
You know, the 20 feet is not any different than what you have earlier in the ordinance, maximum is 20 feet is throughout freestanding signs, so that's already your maximum. It's really just, you get that and these other signs in your total square footage that we talked about earlier for your commercial zone.
So we've had this ordinance for a long time, and nobody's tried to sidestep it, I don't believe, you know, ever. And we only have less than a handful of gas stations in the county that actively sell gas. I'm thinking like at the present time, maybe it's, it's four, I think, maybe? So I don't think it's a problem, and if this was the ordinance and we cleaned it up more, well, we just leave it alone.
So if you think of Quickie Mark, they got a sign, they got a sign on the building that says Quickie Mark, they got old signs on the gas pumps, so.
Well, I think the problem.
Try to draw a box that fits what you have the best you can, so that you can live with that if somebody else came along.
Well, and like I said the other night, the board of supervisors will wrestle with this too, and if there's more concerns, we can go a little deeper, but I think this is a good middle road to send it off.
I mean, Settle's just put up a new sign.
Yeah, they did, because they got taken over by.
Well, it's an issue there.
They were going to exceed their allowable square footage.
But, but they didn't, they reduced it.
Right.
Right, so it wasn't a problem.
Well, but it showed that the regulation is.
It worked, it worked, it worked.
Well, that's great.
And they just, they had to make sure they weren't getting any further from conformity with the ordinance.
So about these green shaded areas, those look like they were left to be filled in. Are we okay with those with a 10 square feet? And it's hard to read, so, three feet in height, four feet in height if set back a minimum of 10 feet from the property line?
And that, that may go into your discussion you had the other night about.
Stop that.
About the neighbor or the road. And maybe you have different numbers for each.
What were the numbers that were here before?
Probably 10.
Okay, I mean, I wonder, there are annotations on the side.
Is what, is the part under the green what used to be in the ordinance?
The part in green is what we need to discuss.
Or it might, it may have been, but it's up for continued discussion.
I'm not sure that that's immediately obvious. Are you, are you somewhat looking?
Yeah, I'm going to go look.
I don't want to bring up another issue if you're looking at it right now.
10 square feet, that's the way it reads today. The part that says signage that exceeds three feet in height or four feet in height, it says back same, 10 feet from property line. That's all.
Sounds fine, though.
So is your interpretation of this property line reference to be sides, road, or both?
I would say both. It gets very complicated if you have a prescriptive right of way for the road, because part of this is middle road, which can't have a sign in the right way anyway, so that would make it immediately based on the highway, which maybe that's fine, if, in your fear of tight quarters like that.
Okay, we won't continue that path again, but, okay, so it sounds like we're okay with this language.
I think it'll work.
All right. Now, we're going on to Section 9 on freestanding signs. So you're not, we're no longer limiting this for shopping center. It's any type of use. And then additional freestanding signs.
So we're thinking about 75 square feet on a freestanding sign. What, what's an example? You know, there, there's banners, there.
I'm sorry?
And then about the sign on the sheet of plywood, that's 64. Two, two sheets of plywood would be 64, so you're a little bit moving that.
What was the question?
I was just trying to get a feel for how big 70 square feet was, and, and it's procedure apply.
Two sheets.
Two sheets.
Two sheets. It's a little bit, we have a little bit more room to go, but two sheets of plywood would be 64 square feet, so you'd be, you'd still have 11 square feet.
So freestanding sign does not necessarily imply a permanent sign. This could also be a temporary sign.
No. They draw permits.
Banners, banners.
I like. Banner for temporary.
Banner is a type of temporary sign, so it would be a banner. It'd only be a fixed sign.
Well, plus if they have more than one street frontage, I think they would get, what, another 75 for each street, street frontage?
Two. Now, their maximum signage is based on their earlier section, so it might be a frontage of their building or whatever. If they're a small building, they might get 50 square feet, so this would be capped at 50.
Okay.
And again, this is only in commercial and industrial zones. Okay. Now, all right, it seems like we're, we're good through nine. Any other comment or discussion on Section 9, or are we prepared to accept that for the current version? Hearing none, simple on 10, commercial zone animated signs.
Yeah.
So back to fluttering, rotating, and moving devices.
So this is the Feather Sign Commission, all over the county, and the question is whether you want to allow them in commercial industrial areas. I infer the co-op for this, or gas station. This would not allow them to be out in the middle of nowhere in front of a library that's an agco, so like commercial. And as I think Ms. Smith pointed out last time, it does not include commercial village, which is essentially Main Street Sperryville, a few spots in the middle of the, I don't know, anywhere else.
Well, I mean, like my logic last time, I think that's fine. Downtown Sperryville, to put, put five feather flags on a little tiny lot in Sperryville is silly, and plus you're right there driving very close to the buildings, you don't need something to catch your eye. You can read the signs just fine. Driving in these zones, you need something to catch your eye, and that, these sort of signs are, are needed. There's a lot of competition for people's attention.
So this is, I'm still trying to figure out if this is adding or limiting a current right, right now, these signs are.
These are, all animated signs are prohibited today.
Okay.
But we have.
And animated basically means it moves or changes any more frequently than once an hour. So the wind tends to blow more than that, lights change more than that. So they're just not allowed, but they're out there.
Okay, so this is opening, a small opening in those.
Like 15.
All right, sounds like there's some consensus around this. So the green numbers, okay, five fluttering, and Ms. Smith, I think you were addressing, is these numbers seem about right to you?
I mean, we could equate them to, to frontage and, and probably increase them, because some of the buildings are quite large, but I think this is a good step. And then again, I would just say, I don't think there have been widespread complaints about these. And honestly, I can remember working in restaurants that flew flags since I was in high school, and no one ever batted an eye. So, you know, something to, to help, that's on the books, match reality is always a good thing.
Technically, an open flag is not allowed today. That's just so.
Like, how many do they have at Williams, down to 11? There must be four or five there.
Yeah, well, so this, this wouldn't affect that.
Okay, that's not agricultural.
So if you want to, want to right-size that, you have to get it some other way.
But that would be allowed, those are special exceptions.
Maybe.
Right?
Uh, but I don't recall.
I mean, those are, well, that one is probably grandfathered, but if someone were to want to do that again.
You can't grandfather a temporary use, which is, you know, these little flags.
Well, I'm saying the commercially used in an otherwise agriculturally zoned area is grandfathered use.
Well, they had a special exception for that corner.
That's fair.
Right, so my point is, they had to come in for a special exception. We could, we could address the signage as part of that special exception. Any future thing like a Williams pops up somewhere else.
You couldn't authorize them to put the signs in over the median. That's the V-dot issue, that are.
All right, well, um.
Well, this seems reasonable to me.
We did look online at some of these feather signs, how, to, if you want to go by, and what are the typical sizes that you get, how wide are they, and it seemed like that was typical size.
Okay, so it sounds like we're tentative, okay with 10, now we're going on to C, which is the following, customary advertisements and identification shall not be included in pole sign regulations. So these are kind of conditional signs that don't take away from your capacity from the other side. That's what this is getting at. Vending machines, safety signs, okay. That seems pretty narrow and straightforward. Any concerns about that? Here's the window sign. So this is, so temporary window sign is one of the things that doesn't take away. So there we go, latest Coca-Cola special with the Quickie Mark, that's not capped towards your, oops, common square feet. Okay, now we're up to general regulations, and I don't see a lot of yellow here, so this is maintaining the status quo essentially down to, down through 1, 2, and 3. And we're changing 4. Can you perhaps?
Just so specific that. I mean, we, we can't get into whether it is, um, talking about the name of the owner, proprietor of the business, and so we can't regulate based on what it says.
So it's just any marquee, maybe it should say marquee signs instead of marquees, because isn't marquee sign the term that we define?
Marquee sign.
Yeah, let's make that marquee sign. And then 5, 6, and 7, and 8 are same. And then we're getting rid of the content-specific stuff, 9 and 10. No sign moving on the sign application, that's just saying you've got to comply with it basically, so there's not. All right, I'm, I'm okay with that. So last section is on lighting signs, so this is, this also looks largely unchanged.
Yeah, a question about lighting, that's kind of unrelated with the signs. That giant V-dot yurt that they built, I could see it from Culpupper.
Salted.
Is that going to be lit up every night like that? You know what I'm talking about, Mr. Atkins?
Yeah.
He'd keep it up at night.
It should not be, it should only be lit up at night when they're working a snow balloon, well, that's what it should be. I haven't seen it. I guess they've left it on and so forth. I don't know if it was just temporary to test to see if the lights were working and so, I don't know.
They were working.
Yeah, I, hey, I could see them for one night too.
That could be our next work session. The state doesn't tend to ask us for any of our data information.
I'm not, I'm not objecting to it.
Well, the students will be glad the lights are on.
Just like hotels, they typically light on.
So my only comment about this is, I know we've, in several of our recent applications, done some revisions to lighting provisions to have them be down-facing and other provisions. This doesn't seem to address that, but with that, with those provisions, so any lawful method of illumination, so it's, what defines what a lawful method of illumination is, is do we have another part of the code that addresses that?
The, the Section 170-119, direct, directly.
So that might be where we would deal with shielding, so we wouldn't have to do that here.
It's, it's in the entire outdoor lighting section. It's 170-119.
Okay, so.
And it's relevant to the number 10.
Yes, it's referenced, so.
Directionally shielded light fixture. What it's called.
In front of the policy.
In B2, that's the provision that came into play for all of your signs, if they're going to be lit, is external directionally shielded light, okay? Not internal light behind a piece of plastic or something, unless you get that approved through your special exception or special use permit, which is that residential zone, that B2, or A, we just talked about a minute ago, 170-119. That was the amiable fire sign, where it's not exterior led, it's interior LED, but you may got your special exception for that.
So I guess, um, because we're now changing the sign ordinance, and existing signs are going to be exempted, or grandfathered anyway, I'm trying to get my head around why we still need this distinction.
The existing legal signs will be vested. You're not going to vest an illegal sign.
A sign that's currently illegal, that's not.
It was, it was constructed.
It was already illegal.
Right.
Okay, so it's not illegal because.
If you move the goalposts, then they were legal before. You move the goalposts further away, and now they're too big, or too close, or too high, they'll be vested.
Okay, so do we need the, do we need the reference to 170-119 under B2?
No, because you don't, um, I don't think you want that leeway for lighting outside of the commercial zone.
Okay, so this is the special use permit, so we would deal with that lighting conditions.
Where there could be a by right use of a gas station in a commercial zone.
Consider, and they wouldn't have.
But they would still have to meet those special lighting requirements in that other section. And, and that allows them to have changing gas prices and things like that. But in a commercial zone, if you go try to do that in a residential zone, then B, B prevents, which it could be handled as part of the special exception.
Okay, that's what I was getting. All right, so that's, again, pretty consistently our current regulations, and then use permits, special exceptions. This is, this is where signage restrictions can be part of the conditions on special exceptions and special uses.
The, I think the general thought is if you have a, if there's a special use permit or special exception in a, in a resource preservation or conservation area, then it's probably a commercial use, and they should have commercial, be able to have a commercial kind of sign.
Like the Williams example we were just discussing.
However, there are also tourist zones and things like that, that are commercial uses in a residential area. And you don't want them to automatically be able to have a commercial-sized sign. And so what it used to say is, you get it unless we say you don't get it. Now it's, now it says, you got to ask for it, you have a special exception, so if you have a commercial use in a residential area, you better ask for a certain size sign in your permit application.
I like it.
Yeah.
So.
Sounds reasonable.
I think we've made it through. Why don't we, motion, circulate those. What is the next, what is the, what is the, be the motion that we need to.
So what I would recommend is that we will, we will then make sure these last two minutes get into the, kind of the next iteration, and then I would prefer that this body then take a, well, you have to decide whether, do you want to share that with the board supervisors, make sure you're on the same page, or do you want to drive towards your public hearing, and then it'll just pass to the board now.
What is the outlook for the joint meeting with the board?
Supposed to be this month. I still don't have any information from the Berkeley group, though.
December. You said this month?
This, yeah, this month I was hoping. Maybe the last week of the month.
It's going to go quick.
Why don't we, why don't we send it to the board?
What was, was there a request? Um, I'm just trying to remember the way we got sent down this path. Did the board make a request, and would that shed any light on what they wanted?
You know, prepare a revision, and, but there might be certain things in here that you want to make sure you're on the same page with the board. I'm not sure, but they've been following along, I think.
Well, certainly, some of them have. So what do you think?
And then what about the feedback we got from Berkeley group? Should we visit that before we send it up to the board?
How are we doing? Ready?
And they've off, they will, they've offered to review it in detail at some point in time too, and I think you would want to do that before you put it up there. Send to the Berkeley group.
So I think we should take a few more minutes. I know it's getting tedious, but let's see if we can knock out these. We, we started on, and these lines refer to this.
No, that's a problem.
Can we, can we zero in on line 231? Small signs, each of which is to their, are the same thing. All small signs.
Think we did that.
See 2 square feet instead of coming out specific boxes. Well, that is.
Yeah, so this, this section is talking about displaying addresses, and so I think their point is, don't, don't parse that, and if it's a small sign, it's a small sign, and don't worry about it.
So can we go back to the top page? Small signs, each of which has a total area not exceeding two square feet.
So you just delete that.
And then strike the rest of that sentence?
Yeah, that seems to be what they're proposing. I, I think I'm clear with that.
I think that's great.
Okay, so, cap, you guys.
So K, K kind of falls into that same, so if, if you're exempting everything not exceeding two square feet, right? Then.
Wow.
K.
No trespassing signs would also be.
You don't exempt them from those.
Allowing.
You're allowing, you're exempt, you're exempted then from the requirement to get a permit.
Right, I think that also makes sense. So that's part of 231, and, yeah. Oh, so also I, yeah, so it's all, it's all of them.
Yeah, so several.
It's all of those, it's, it's G through K. Yeah. They were all getting exempted anyway, so let's just make it. Alright, uh, line 242.
So J, um, that's not size-dependent.
Seasonal displays and decorations. So we would still need J, cause it's not a subset of small signs. Actually, K isn't either. Oh no, it is the two, yeah, it's the same size.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I wonder if we wanna put any kind of limit on the number of square signs?
You mean the number of small.
Or small signs, I'm so sorry.
That's alright.
Is what would be the most logical way to limit that?
That would be tough, I'm, I'm recalling, and it's not something we necessarily heard, but I know I've seen these areas where trespassing has been an issue, and they go on staple one on every tree.
Yeah.
Enough.
Well, and there are certainly, to properly post your property, there's code for that somewhere.
So you do do that in the temporary, where you say, you don't need a permit for the small temporary signs, but you can only have five.
Okay.
You don't do the same thing in permanent section, so, but most of these are, if you placard it into a tree or something, I think that's a temporary.
Yeah, I could say seven.
So we could do something.
But it's not gonna have the date of it first, whatever on the back. And it's gonna be up for more than a hundred days, so it's not a temporary sign.
Yeah.
So these, are we talking about possibly putting some kind of constraint on the total aggregate number of or area of small signs, is that what we're talking about?
It sounds like that's accounted for later on, so it seems like it's okay from what I hear.
Yeah, so you could, you could, for example, put something into 106, which is your resource preservation in residential zones.
Yeah.
And you could say you could have some maximum number of small signs, whatever you wanted to find it there.
Since that's based on the total aggregate amount.
It's in there, right?
The problem you have there is that that includes, uh, like trespassing efficient signs, so a, a two-acre lot can have five, a thousand-acre parcel can have five. So one size doesn't fit all.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was trying to figure, but I, I think, like, Carrie said, we address it in other sections, so.
Well, I think the other section, limiting it.
I think this is, you know, I think you're, you're getting onto a person's property rights here.
Actually, all of them.
Well, you know, when you tell them you can't put a no trespassing sign on, if he's got a thousand acres, you can open five up, or a hundred acres. I mean, I, I can see the nuisance to the public if you put one on every tree, but most people do it reasonable, so I think you gotta have some common sense here, and just, to address these issues.
Yeah, I think we're in agreement, the point is that the language later that limits it to not, to five
Yeah.
is currently not doing what you want it to do.
Yeah, but that, that's for temporary, these would not be, these would be up for more than a hundred days, so they would not be.
So they're not, they're just.
They may have a regular sign and be, um, they.
So there's no aggregate limit on.
No, you'd think, if somebody could put Exxon signs on all their trees, you know? But there's a practicality of some of this, that it's just not ever gonna be a problem, so you could probably exempt those small signs that are one square feet, I mean, most of those posted signs are real small.
I guess I'm trying to understand the consequences of row 508, 170 dash 106, resource preservation in residential zones. Total, total signage per lot of parcel shall not exceed that of thirty-two square feet. So to, to Al's point, if you've got a very large parcel, and you've got, you know, a hundred no trespassing signs, you might exceed thirty-two square feet. So it seems to me that the language as written may be causing the problem.
You could put a sentence in that says signs for, uh, land use of parcels are exempt.
I mean, see, this, you can't get at what the sign's for, but you can say, um, signs less than, uh, one square foot exempt, do not add to the aggregate, something like that.
Yeah. So it seems like we might need that.
Yeah.
So maybe, uh.
And that probably applies to resource preservation in residential zones, but not really to commercial.
I think that's right, so I think maybe we can say something like total signage for signs.
You have to think you have to follow.
One square feet.
Yeah, you have to think you have to follow, please, you kind of walked up to it a little bit.
So what is the, what is your proposal? I think you're on the same page, you're just gonna put a.
What did they have putting under exempt?
That just means you don't need to get a permit, but it doesn't necessarily.
This is the aggregate.
Doesn't add up to your total.
So I think the point is we wanna add something to 170-106, the five, this paragraph that starts at 508, that excludes signs that are each less than one square foot.
Yeah, I, I got the intent, and there's language somewhere further back that we already did that for the gasoline stuff, right?
Okay.
Certain, certain signs don't add up, don't add to your total.
242 is. Yeah, this is a content issue, we don't need.
Yeah, well, this is the one where we just said, sue us. It's, it is, the margin comment said we're pushing the limits of content.
Yeah.
Uh, but this is the core of who we are, and courts want to push you down later on, when somebody else wants it, you might have to take it away from everybody.
Yeah, I, I tend to agree, I mean, if we, if we can't open it up completely. So, any other thoughts, I think we stick with dark.
I think we should stick with a chair.
Alright, 247, recommend providing all signs for government or agency in one group, not specifying, so this is another one where they're saying we don't need to parse them out.
Well, which may include, do you read the word may, it gets us worthless.
Yeah.
It's, it's kind of instructive to, as the administrator is looking at it later on, just to get a context.
Alright, so thank you for no thanks. Uh, line 275.
This is again, this is.
So what's the 242, is that where we do wayside stand or something? Oh, it's the onsite season thing, yeah. So we consider it, we're keeping it, so I don't think we wanna do anything with that one.
Okay.
Well, one is a, one is a permanent sign, one's a temporary sign, so you, you do give both, is what this is saying, in those circumstances where you got a farm and you, like, this is, uh, you involve a farm and that's your sign.
Yeah.
And then sometimes they're near yourself in watermelons, so you wanna put up your, bang your old other sign to attract attention with your watermelon.
So I think we did consider it.
Yeah.
And it's good. Uh, for row six. Commercial messages.
I think that that's fine, and, um, you know, a couple of years ago when this all came up, I did quite a bit of reading about fines and, you know, litigation as a result of, disagreements about signs, and, and it does seem like commercial versus non-commercial is sort of still untested waters, and it's kind of worth holding a lot, in my opinion.
I agree, so, yeah, consider that, and we're leaving. And now one more, line 594.
Where are you going?
Oh, we already got rid of that, we did have.
Thanks, we got done with that in less than fifteen minutes, thank you.
Alright, so back to the question ahead, so the, the motion is to make these changes and forward it to the supervisors, is that what you would like?
Well, Mr. Schulman suggested maybe send it to Berkeley group and have them give it their more detailed scrote.
Is that already within their tasking, or is that something that we?
What, why would you have Berkeley group look at it after the board looks at it?
Yeah, I, I'm of the mind that maybe the board should take a look at it and make sure it's something that they had, that they had in mind, and then send it to the Berkeley group for edits or suggestions.
Or back to us if there's something.
I actually think, we're having a public hearing before this, before the Berkeley group.
Well, given the fact that they already breezed through it, didn't find any major constitutional issues or anything, then you wouldn't wanna put something out to the public that you find out is dead on arrival because you totally missed the vote, but I think you've passed that. Between the county attorney getting you the original draft, Berkeley group taking a look at what you have now, and you go through it multiple times, you're probably beyond that concern or risk.
Basically, the Berkeley group looked at everything up until Monday night, and, and what we did prior to Monday night was a lot more detailed and depth than what we did Monday night tonight. So really, that's what they're gonna be focusing on, and they're really the next review they do. So to let the board look at it, and after the board does, and their comments and changes, Berkeley group can look at it, and then.
I think I can go ahead and put forward a motion that we, um, in the event that there is a joint meeting scheduled, uh, before the next board supervisors' meeting, that we would include, uh, the draft we've worked through tonight, on that agenda for review and discussion by the board and the planning commission. And in the event there is not a joint meeting scheduled before the next board supervisors regularly scheduled meeting, um, I would suggest we send this to the board supervisors for their review and feedback.
So the purpose of the joint meeting would be only for side ordinance?
No, it was, it would talk about this roadmap of where the entire zoning ordinance is going from here, how it might be restructured with minor changes, and then the output from Art and I on the use table and trying to get that where we're gonna sit, just to go to the board.
So that might be a lot to cover in one joint meeting.
It could be. And I, I don't think it's coming together anyway, it's like the truth.
Why don't we just forward it to the supervisors?
Why don't we just concentrate, why don't we just concentrate on the sign ordinance first, I mean.
Okay. Well, I'll amend my agenda, or amend my, uh, motion to just, uh, strike the first part regarding the joint meeting, and to send it along to the board supervisors for their feedback the next, uh, regularly scheduled joint meeting.
I think, I think it's a big step for us to get this off our table, it's a big accomplishment.
So.
I second her motion.
Lovely, any further discussion, so I guess my only question about that is, really, it isn't up to us when they take it up, I mean, that, I know that's something you will have to deal with, but then.
Well, any board member can answer for something to be on the agenda, so it kind of sounds like they just did.
Oh, okay, but I mean, for our purposes, all we're doing is getting these changes that we've discussed made and forwarded it to them, right? Right, yeah.
And, and, you know, for my part as a member of the board, I'll, I'll just.
Make sure that it's on.
Field questions and be happy to answer any concerns that they have regarding the draft language, and explain our thought processes and what we step forward, and, um, gladly, you know, take any next steps from there that there's a consensus on.
Terrific.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much, congratulations, I think your motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye. Everybody likes to make that about a.